Good evening, councillors and members of the public. Welcome to this meeting of the Southern Area Planning Committee. Draw attention to the fire regulations on the screen behind me. There are no practices intended tonight, so if the alarm goes, please leave the building as quickly as possible without using the lift, and we assemble across the road under the canopy outside Waitrose. Please, can I ask everyone to switch their mobile phones to silent or to off? And just respectfully remind one and all that the committee is aware of the feelings around this consideration tonight. I would ask that you refrain from booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. Before we start, I’ll introduce the officers in front of me. Jo Ayers, solicitor; Peter Cleveland, head of development control; Ryan Snow, senior planning officer; and Rachel Calas, also senior planning officer. So without more ado, let’s move on to the business. Item number one on the agenda, the minutes of meeting which took place on the 4th of January have been on the table for the last 30 minutes. I contend I signed those as a true record. Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillor Jed Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Decorations of interest.
Sorry, also apologies from councillor Manon, who is in Florida.
Oh, yeah, long way to come.
You should apologise, do I?
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Decorations of interest, Emma.
None before the meeting, but I believe Hazemere, town councillors declare a non-peculiar interest.
Councillor King?
Sorry, I did submit one before the meeting. I have a non-peculiar interest in item 6.4.
Thank you very much. Moving on then, Emma, any questions from members of the public?
None received, Chair.
Thank you. And item number five, relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting. Peter Cleveland?
Thank you, Chairman. It’s not in regards to legislation, but I have just an update on our five-year housing supply assessment. You note at the beginning of the year you had received an appeal decision relating to Hewitt’s industrial estate in Cranley, where our housing land supply assessment was challenged. The conclusion of that inspector was saying we were in the region of having 3.4 to 4.6 years’ supply, based on our 1st of July 2016 assessment. Obviously, in response to that, we’ve carried out a further review, and it’s ongoing, about our current position in housing land supply assessment. But, as I said, it hasn’t been quite finalised, but we are now indicating through that further assessment, given more recent planning permissions granted, that we can actually demonstrate a supply of 5.79 years. And formally, we will be publishing that position over the next day, day or so. But it’s important to update you on that position as an important material consideration in tonight’s committee, and it’s relevant to three of the items, and that’s B1, B2, and B3 on your agenda. And you’re noting in the report that still refers to 5.3 years. I’d just like to make a verbal update for all three of those items, rather than individually, that that, under the housing land supply section, it should refer to 5.79 years. And as I say, it takes account of more recent approvals, it takes account of the Hewitt’s decision, which was allowed as well, another 120 units, and it rolls forward a further six months, so assessments are that we can still demonstrate a supply at this stage. It’s just a general overview, but hopefully that’s helpful for members, but happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you indeed. Is that noted, members? Thank you very much indeed. Moving on then to item number six, site inspections, should any be due. The next one will be on the 21st of February 2017, at a time to be agreed. But can I just make a little plea to save duplication of officers’ time? If you see an application that you are going to call in, could you also please ask for a site visit at the same time? They can always be cancelled during the process. And I would like to thank all members who came on site visit yesterday in the slightly damp conditions, but I think it’s important that we... When the new planning list comes out a week before our next meeting on the 1st of March, there’s plenty of time to ask for a site visit, should that be necessary. So I would ask for a little bit of foresight, please. Moving on then, item A1 is Robinswood, Three Bray Side, Hazemere, and introducing this is Peter Cleveland.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As you’ll see on screen, the site is located on the eastern side of Bray Side Close, which is a cul-de-sac located off the avenue in Hazlemere. Site is occupied by a detached bungalow, for those on the site visit will have seen that, but I’ll take you through the detail of the application site. Land levels rise steeply to the east, and the dwelling is located at a higher land level than the road and is set into the hillside. There is a detached garage on site, which is this red block here, set forward of the house, and that is a lower land level, level of the highway. The surrounding area is residential, and adjoining properties on Bray Side Close are bungalows, which are also set into the hillside. Just take you through a few photos now. This is a photo of the front of the site, the garage I referred to, and the access into that with a deck over it. There’s a summer house slightly further set back, and you’ll see the existing dwelling there and the retaining walls on the front of the site. This is a view, standing in front of the property but looking up Bray Side Close, you’ve got the garage on the right and the sort of turning area associated on the, within the close. This is the next photo. The one on your left looks from the rear of the property towards the rear boundary, and as I referred to, the sloping site, you can see the clear changing land levels and the existence of retaining walls, and then a slope up to the rear boundary fencing. And the photo on your right is the rear elevation of the existing property, and as you can see, patio area, then a retained wall that leads into the rest of the garden. So this is the southern site boundary, so side boundary, as you can see, it just takes down, is kept by a timber fence as existing, and again, you can see how the site slopes from front to back. I’ve referred to, when you were looking at the garage on the front, there was some existing decking over that, and that’s obviously evident here. Left-hand side, you can see some of the decking, and then further over, looking across to the side boundary of the site, and you can see again the front of the summer house which exists there. So this is a view looking from the front of the house in a westerly direction, across the valley. Two views, one straight out from the front and one from the decking, again, above the existing garage. This is the existing access road, and you can see in the distance, this is the existing property, which is a one-and-a-half-storey sort of shallow-type property there. This is the street scene, as I referred to before, surrounding properties are bungalows, you can see the application site here and the neighbouring property, and again, it gives you some idea of the topography of the land. I’ve also taken a view from Cherry Tree Avenue, which is on the opposite side of the valley, so hopefully this is helpful. You can make out the application site in here, and also the wider view, which shows some of the larger properties which sit above and beyond the application site on the hillside there, within what is a fairly well landscaped, soft landscaped valley. Hopefully those views are helpful as well, from your point of view. I’ll just take you to the block plan now. The proposal includes a demolition of the existing garage, which I’ve identified, and decking and its replacement with a double garage with new decking over. The garage would be located on the northern boundary in a similar position to existing garage, and replacement decking would obviously be situated above. Views from the decking would be similar to that of the existing, and that is of the road, the turning area, and towards the front curtilage and parking of Five Bray Side Close, which is this property here. That boundary is currently screened by existing planting, which you have seen on site and from the photos. As you can see, the garage would not encroach any further towards the turning area than the existing garage, which is shown dotted on plan here. In addition, a porch is proposed on the front of the property, and a first floor is proposed above the existing footprint of the dwelling, with front and rear-facing dormers. Clear glazed windows in the front elevation would overlook, or would look above the property at Bray Side Close, due to the significant drop in levels in land, and at the rear would look onto the boundary fence, due to the rise in land, again, highlighted. So these are the existing elevations, the bungalow, you’ve seen them on the photos, so I won’t take you through them in detail. These are proposed floor plans. Ground floor plan on your left, floor plan of the garage, highlighted, you can see, the grey area highlights the footprint of the existing garage, and there’s a summer house, and this is the proposed new floor, which would be provided. Here you’ll see the proposed elevations. Building would have a total height of 6.5 metres, with gable features and dormers in the front elevation, and dormers within the rear elevation, as you can see, and as shown on the roof plan in bottom left. The decking would have new balustrading around it for security purposes. In terms of the street scene, you’ll see, this is the proposed dwelling, these are the neighbouring properties in Bray Side Close. As we say, it is a two-storey building in place of the bungalow, and the two adjacent properties are single-storey. However, taking into sort of the consideration, separation distance between the property and the adjoining properties, and the mixture of properties in the founding area, this is not considered to be harmful, in an officer’s opinion. Furthermore, from wider views, as shown on the photos from the other side of valley, property is seen against a backdrop of the hillside with differing sizes on heights of properties, and this is considered to be acceptable overall. So in terms of the determining issues, we’ve got the principal development, principal extensions considered to be acceptable, access and parking is also deemed to be acceptable. Currently, there’s only one parking space serving the property. The actual requirement for it, against our guidelines, would be two and a half spaces. The same would apply for the size of the dwelling on site, and they provide an additional space of a larger garage. Biodiversity matters and the impact on special protection areas have been addressed in the report. So matters for members’ judgement, impact on visual amenity, and how they consider it sits from the street scene, if that’s acceptable, and impact on residential amenity. So just before I pass back to the Chairman, you’ll note that there is an update on page one of your update sheet, and two additional letters of objection have been received, raising concerns regarding impact on parking and overspill onto the avenue, and the concerns the sewers will not be able to, will be unable to cope with the additional development taking place on site. It’s considered that all these matters are addressed in full within the officer report, so the recommendation remains that permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 7, and informative 1 on pages 24 to 27 of the agenda report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Peter. As you know, this is a public speaking item, the procedure has been explained, so I call on Mrs Wig to speak. The big button.
The long one.
The long one, yeah.
Good evening. Just to remind you, my name’s Corrally Wig, I’m the owner of Number Two Bray Side Close. I’m speaking this evening on behalf of myself and the balance of the occupants of the close, all of whom are represented here this evening. We would like to stress first that there are no personal issues here, and we consider the Gs to be good neighbours, and this is strictly about the proposed development. You kindly visited Bray Side Close yesterday to assess the application on site. You will now appreciate that, as previously described, it is a steep, winding, narrow drive, with four secluded bungalows nestling in the trees located along it. The four primary objections against the potential impact of the proposed development remain for us as follows. Number one, overbearing. The proposed development with two stories is not in keeping with the existing character of the close. Its overbearing looks out of scale compared to the existing dwellings. The other properties will no longer enjoy their current seclusion. Number three will go from a three-bed, one-and-a-half-bath bungalow to a five-bed, four-bath house. Number two, overlooking. We are particularly concerned that properties number two and one will be overlooked by a wall of French windows, and by the upstairs windows, by virtue of the fact the house sits at an angle to our properties. Number three, traffic and parking. The number of occupants for a property will bring with them a significantly increased volume of traffic and parking to a close that is already busy. Number four, precedent. Bray Side Close is a unique street in Hazlemere with a blend of bungalows. It’s not a mix of properties such as Farnham Lane. Our primary concern is the precedent that will be set by allowing the development of number three into a two-story house. Once approved, this will allow the redevelopment of the rest of the street over time. This will eliminate the unique nature of what we currently enjoy. We do not believe the road and utilities will be able to cope with the amount of development, and the traffic and parking may eventually become untenable. In summary, we still strongly object to the development of number three in the extent to which it is currently presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Wig. Mr G, you have four minutes from when you start talking. Thank you. Sorry, you’ve now knocked it off. Same button again, red lights on.
Thank you, Mr Chairman and councillors. Just to confirm, my name is Ian G, the freeholder and owner of the property, Three Bray Side Close, Robinswood. First of all, I would like to repeat some of the points that I made a month ago at the first planning committee, which was convened to determine my application. I’ve done everything that I could have been expected to do as a member of the public, using the planning system, trying to improve what is my sole property and my residential home. I am a family man, I’m the only person with a family in the close. I’ve taken up pre-application advice from Waverley, I have consulted, I have listened, I’ve withdrawn an application in response to some feedback, I’ve scaled down my application with less than ideal proposals on my behalf. In summary, considering all the relevant evidence, facts, context, consultation response, Waverley’s own planning professionals have recommended an approval be made to my development. Six councillors have this week had the benefit of visiting the site, and I hope this has been useful in better understanding the site conditions. Turning to some of the representations and matters raised. On precedent for the development, it’s clear that significant development in this part of Waverley is taking place. I probably don’t need to remind the planning committee of just how much is happening around the particular locality of Bray Side Close. I’m in conformance with the planning requirements, and on this basis, I would like to be given the opportunity to enjoy entitlement to improve my sole residential dwelling for my family. Overbearing nature of the proposals, I understand that visualising the development can be difficult off-plan. Councillors now are acquainted with the site and the height of the ridge marked, shown above our roof. And perhaps this will allow a better understanding that a 1.6-metre-high ridge height, curtailed by roof hips, is perhaps not as intrusive as some representations might suggest. On overlooking others, again, those visiting the site will understand my neighbours to the north are completely out of view, those to the south are not subject to overlooking, through both existing layout and design. Those in Bray Cottage are to the west, are a distance away, according to planning guidelines, and in a similar manner to the brand-new and substantial detached home, immediately to the east of my property and recently approved by Waverley. On parking and turning, we have corrected misinformation on the current and proposed parking and turning arrangements. My proposals increase the existing adequate parking space and provide additional turning space to my neighbours. I would observe that 10 cars were parked at the visit in the close yesterday, and I think this indicates that the existing arrangement is functional, and it’s an arrangement that will only be improved by my development. On the matter of sewers, although this is not a material planning consideration, it has been the subject of representation. And as has been clarified by my adviser, the shared sewer serving both number one, two, and three is in the ownership of Thames Water, and the individual branches only are the owner’s property. May I reassure therefore that no-one has more interest than I in ensuring that the shared sewer continues to convey waste away from my property, and that is not damaged by my proposals. On general construction impact, very little to say, other than I think the planning condition of a construction traffic condition pre-construction is entirely reasonable, and I’m very happy to fulfil that planning requirement. Thank you, Chairman and councillors.
Thank you, Mr G. Could you just switch the microphone off? Thank you very much. Members, open it up to you. Councillor Piper?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It was indeed yesterday very useful to actually do a site visit, but I am concerned about the bulk of this two-story house in what is a cul-de-sac of bungalows. It’s not in keeping with the street scene, and I also have concerns with regard to the overlooking aspect of Bray Cottage, especially as it was noticed in this time of the year, when the trees are bare, you could clearly, from an upper floor, I mean, even from the garden as it is at the moment, but from an upper floor, you could easily see down into the Bray Cottage. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Piper. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman, good evening. This is quite a controversial application here, and I take note of what my fellow councillors just said about the street scene. The street scene is the street scene. I do not understand the officer’s comments on page 17 in drawing the hillside as part of the street scene, okay? I think we’re finding excuses to allow this to go through. I find it completely reprehensible, actually, I’m really quite angry about it. If you look at the drawing on page 10, quite clearly, that is not in keeping with the street scene. It’s not. I can’t understand where you’re coming from on this. It’s ridiculous. Now, going back to the location, if we look at the block plan, we can look at, yeah, Bray Side Cottage. I actually visited Bray Side Cottage yesterday morning as part of the site visit. I know the area quite well, it’s part of my patch, I’m the ward member there, and I spoke to Mr Honey, who happened to be at home. He took me into his kitchen, and he showed me the view from his kitchen. What he can see from his kitchen is just the apex of the roof line, that’s all he can see, from his kitchen, not from his bedroom, but when you put another story on there, they’ll be seen straight into his kitchen. And the view into his bedroom would be, well, open to all. This is completely unacceptable for a resident. It’s a loss of amenity, and we should bear that in mind, and I don’t know why the officers haven’t taken up on that.
Can I just stop you for a minute, Councillor Edwards, because Bray Side Cottage was not part of the site visit?
No, it wasn’t, but I went there, but as you can see, looking west, it looks directly into Bray Side Cottage. Can we go back to the photographs, please? Looking west, please. There you are. That is Bray Side Cottage, you can see there, with the dormer windows in the roof, that’s it, that’s Bray Side Cottage. Now, you’re going to have another story on top of that, looking into that... Now, when I mentioned it to the officers at the site visit, “Oh, well, the leaves will grow in the summertime”, yeah, but that’s transitory, they fall off in the wintertime, so there’s still a loss of amenity. Now, Mr Honey, who lives there, is absolutely livid about this application, because he said he’ll have no privacy at all with the introduction of this second story. While we’re on that photograph, as you can see, that is taken from the roof of the garage, where decking has been put in, as I understand it, am I correct? You’re going to put another layer in there for the double garage, and another viewpoint looking into Bray Side Cottage. This is an acceptable loss of amenity. On the submissions on support, it does say on page 15, “There are no issues with overlooking or loss of light”. Well, clearly, there is a problem here. I mean, I picked it up, so, you know, it’s obvious. I object to the decking, the street scene, and, listen, I understand people want to improve their homes, and it’s, there’s nothing wrong with the size of the plot, but it’s the fact that a loss of amenity for neighbouring properties is unacceptable, and it’s not part of the street scene. And, you know, we can’t allow improvements at the expense of neighbouring properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just come back on your comment about the decking? The decking’s already there on a single garage. It’s going to be a double garage further away from the road, and two cars will be in it, as opposed to one.
Can I come back?
You may come back, Councillor Edwards.
Yeah, thank you. Well, yeah, but it doubles, it doubles the opportunity of overlooking, and, you know, it shouldn’t be allowed to happen. I mean, that decking wasn’t there prior, when Mr Honey moved into his home. It’s been added since, as has the summer house, where it appears that it’s, somebody’s living there, or spending summers there, or whatever, but, you know, that’s been added since. That’s all I can say on that, I’m afraid.
Thank you very much. I’ll get the officers to come back on that shortly. Councillor Corbyn?
Yes, obviously, I went on the site visit yesterday, and I looked at the houses behind, and I looked at the cottage. I have no personal interest in here, and quite frankly, I’m a little bit worried, councillor Edwards, about some of the things you’ve just said. I have no personal interest in this site whatsoever, I’m looking at it as a site for development and what the applicant is trying to do. Looking at the houses behind him, yes, I could see upstairs windows, I couldn’t see in them, I have no idea what was going on in the bedrooms of those houses, they’re so far away, and the angle, your eyes don’t go up and in. We looked across the valley downwards, and again, yes, you could see those bedroom windows, you couldn’t see anything inside them at all. It’s not the way site and vision works. And I have to say, looking as we did when we were in the garden, at the houses behind, the houses in front, and the whole shape and the development of the valley, I can fully understand what the officers are saying about the street scene here. It’s not a straightforward street scene. The bungalow to the, I want to get my geography right, to the left of the site, hardly features in the street scene when you look at it, because it’s so well-shielded. The street has got such a big bend in it, like this, it is four, if you like, discreet bungalows on a hillside. And what you seem to be saying is, because one other house, of whom you happen to know the owner, is going to be affected by this, you cannot let anybody on this street improve their house in any way. And I just feel we’re going down very dangerous territory here. It may not be suitable, but please, make it suitable, or not suitable, on planning grounds, and not emotional grounds, or grounds that don’t make any sense, otherwise we would be acting unreasonably.
Can I come back, please, Chairman, to reply to your vice-chairman?
Well, I totally agree with her comments, so yes, Councillor Edwards, come back.
Well, I don’t agree, I’m sorry. The street scene is a planning issue, I’m not talking about the houses at the top of the hill, I’m not talking about... the hill, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about overlooking of Bray Cottage, that's all I'm talking about, and the street scene, you know, it's there, it's for everybody to see, it's on the photograph. Thank you.
You are on a hill, you're looking down, you don't look in. councillor Rand.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think if I had a helicopter, I might be able to judge the street scene, but given the topography, I think it's impossible otherwise. I not criticise the officers for drawing their street scene, I thought councillor Edwards' comments on that were not quite appropriate, I think it's a fine drawing, but given that you can never be in a position where you enjoy that view, I'm not sure how relevant it is, that view. So I have no problem with that, and I think the buildings are sufficiently well-spaced apart, that if they're all developed like this, I think it would probably improve the area, and I have no problem with this application, I think it's, whether it's in keeping or not, may not really be an argument, it certainly doesn't look odd, it looks quite nice, and I see no reason to say no.
councillor King.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I appreciated the site visit very much yesterday, even though it was a bit damp, it gave a very good perspective of where this building sits in the landscape, and from that perspective, I don't have a problem, but I do have a problem in relation between that house and its immediate neighbours in Brayside Close. I feel it's a very bulky and domineering, I mean, I think even from that picture, it's obvious, it now dwarfs the property next door, so I'm still not completely happy about this. I also noted that there is a statement in the report somewhere, that officers comment, or the applicant does, that all building materials will be stored on-site. I do have some concerns about that, because I really wonder where and if they're going to store them, because as we discovered, it's quite limited on level ground. So overall, I'm still undecided. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Rand, please come back.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, it's just I forgot to say something, which my colleague has just made me realise, and that is that we have to remember that the ridge is only being increased by one and a half metres or something of that order. And I must say, I found it very helpful of the applicant, the occupant, with the notices strategically placed around the building yesterday, and particularly the bit of wood showing where the new ridge would be. And it's not much, it's four or five feet, I don't think, it's quite pleasant the way the windows are set into the roof, and is a good way of extending a house in that way. So, again, I don't think it's overbearing.
Peter Cleveland.
Thank you, Chairman, just if it would be helpful, I'll come back on the two points, comments about the landscape and the wider view have already been picked up, but just to reiterate, it is important for the wider view to be taken into account, and I appreciate looking at it right next to those bungalows that are adjacent to the site, you get a perspective, but because it's a hillside, it is very important to look at that wider view and see the context it sits within, so hopefully those photographs are helpful and understand where the officers are coming from, you need to look at it from that wider point of view as well. Of course, the design is a subjective matter, but there is a whole host and mix of design within the area, and we feel that appropriate materials and the design is reflective of that, and the point that's already been picked up, the design ensures that the ridgeline is kept to a minimum, but it is a subjective matter for members to consider. In terms of the overlooking point, that was the point I just wanted to pick up on mainly, particularly the view into Bray Cottage. On page nineteen of your agenda, we pick up that specifically, and you'll be aware that we have our residential extensions guidelines, which sets out that as a rule, we should have a separation distance of twenty-one metres between properties to prevent overlooking, and that's directly, and you'll notice that the distance from first-floor windows at Bray Cottage is over a twenty-five metre separation distance, so it would comply with our guidelines that we work towards, so hopefully that's helpful from that point of view. And again, the point has been raised, but there is completely different levels, so you wouldn't have that direct view across. Of course, if you want to go right up to the window and hang out and look right over, there will be oblique views available, but as you enter the room, you wouldn't have a direct view window to window, so that change in level is relevant in determination of the application, and to take account of the distance and separation distance is greater than what our guidelines suggest. The only other point I'll raise is, the footprint isn't getting bigger, it obviously goes straight up above the existing property, and we feel, given the separation distance between the sites, that is acceptable. The land levels are a key point to take into account, but given the design, no side-facing sort of windows and large windows at first level or at first-floor level, there wouldn't be any direct overlooking or overbearing effect from that view as well. So hopefully that's helpful for members, and thank you, Chairman. Yes.
I think it's worth just pointing out that we may not like applications, but we are required to view them dispassionately, and that's how an inspector would view them. I don't particularly like this, but I really can't see good reason for refusing it, so I shall be voting with the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I was messing around with something else, sorry councillor Edgbout. councillor Adams.
Chairman, I'll be abstaining on this one, I don't have a planning issue, my issue is the fact that we're short of bungalows in our Waverley, and I'm disappointed that Mr G hasn't decided to move house to a larger property that's already built.
Thank you, councillor. Members, if there's nothing, councillor Rand, please come back.
Thank you. Just a very small point on that, I think someone made the comment yesterday that, gosh, if ours are old, well, I suppose we are getting old, there's lots of steps up to it, if we think bungalows are attractive to the elderly, this one may not be.
A very good point there. Officers, do you wish to say anything else before we move on to the recommendation?
No, thank you, Chairman.
Members, in that case, recommendation, permission be granted, subject conditions one to seven, informatives one on pages twenty-four to twenty-seven of the agenda report. May those in favour of the recommendation grant, please show.
One, two, three, four, five.
Those against?
One, two, three.
Abstentions?
One.
Therefore, planning permission is granted. Thank you, members. Move on to item B1, WA twenty sixteen, one, seven, one, four. Erection, I'll just hold on for a moment. Item B1, WA twenty sixteen, one, seven, one, four, erection of extensions, alteration to existing garages to create two dwellings, garages at Witwell Hatch, Scotland Lane, Haslemere. Ryan, you're introducing this one.
Thank you, Chairman. We'll start with the location plan, the application site is located to the south of Scotland Lane, between a cluster of residential developments comprising Witwell Down Lodge, Witwell Hatch cottages and Witwell Hatch. As the aerial photograph shows here, the area is semi-rural in character with many tall mature tree planting surrounding the site. Here's some site photographs. The top-left photograph shows the garage and workshop subject of this application. The top-right photograph demonstrates the proximity of the application site to the nearest neighbouring residential property of Witwell Hatch cottages. The bottom-left photograph is of the garages to the north of the application site. The bottom-right photograph demonstrates the proximity of the application site, which you can see just there on the far right of the photograph, to the neighbouring residential property of Witwell Down Lodge. There's some more site photographs, the top-left photograph showing the proposed communal area taken from the application site itself, the top-right photograph shows the rear elevation of the existing residential property of Witwell Hatch cottages, and the bottom photograph there demonstrates the flats at Witwell Hatch, looking back from the proposed communal garden area. Here we have the existing block plan, which demonstrates the location of the existing garages to the centre of the image there, and the surrounding built form, so we have Witwell Lodge, Witwell Hatch cottages, and Witwell Hatch there, and then the garages just here. Here's the proposed block plan, which demonstrates the layout of the proposed scheme. Proposed units one and two would be located between the residential properties of Witwell Down Lodge and Witwell Hatch cottages. The parking provision of two spaces would be provided within the existing garages to the north of the application site, down here, and a further two parking spaces in the existing driveway just here. Here are the plans for the existing garage and workshop, which, the existing building, sorry, measures two-point-eight metres in width, nine metres in depth, and six-point-two metres in height to the ridge. Here we have the proposed elevations for units one and two. The proposed dwellings would measure fifteen metres in width, nine-point-two metres in depth, and seven-point-five metres in height to the ridge. The dwellings would have a gable end feature to the front and rear elevations, and a dual-pitched dormers to the front and side elevations. It is proposed that the elevations would feature facing brickwork and tile hanging. The roofs of the new dwellings would have plain clay tiles, and it is proposed to have painted timber windows and doors. Here are further proposed elevations for the dwellings. And here we have the proposed floor plans for units one and two. These plans show the proposed floor plans for units one and two, and demonstrate that proposal meets the recommended internal space standards. So in conclusion, the proposed development would have limited prominence in the broader landscape, and would not cause material harm to the countryside, and would not fail to conserve or enhance the landscape character and natural beauty of the AOMB and AGLV. It would be acceptable in terms of design and impact on surrounding neighbours. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the impact on trees, highways and parking, effects on the SBA's financial considerations and biodiversity. The matters of judgment are the impact on the countryside beyond the Green Belt, and the impact on the landscape character and designated AOMB, AGLV, design and impact on visual amenity, standard of accommodation and provision of amenity space, impact on residential amenity, and the location of development. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Ryan, and thank you for some good photographs that went along with the site visit yesterday. councillor Rand.
A small point while we're gathering thoughts, may I ask, that plan, it's got north going down the bottom of the page, is there an accepted way of having maps where north is at the top? Personally, I can cope wherever it is, I don't have to turn the map to be in the direction in which I'm travelling, but I am used to seeing north at the top.
Very good, very good point, well spotted. Peter.
Yes, conventionally, we would usually see the map that way, but in terms of the validation requirement, it requires a map to identify it, and a north point if it isn't on there, and the north point is on that bottom corner. It's not easy to interpret, but if we are to receive them, they are a valid planning application on that basis. Thank you, Chairman.
I must say, I found the design really quite attractive and very much in keeping with the surround, quite delightful. councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. My only concern here was the fact that it was in the AOMB and AGLV etcetera, but I think that's been addressed in the main. Are we quite happy with, the officers are quite content that, you know, this is development within that, and it does add to the, what they call it, add to the beauty of the countryside, etcetera.
Peter.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you councillor Edwards. Yeah, because it sits within that sort of tight knit of development, it doesn't sit out in open landscape or anything like that, and I think the actual design enhances the appearance of the building that's currently there, so we don't think it has a wider impact visually on the landscape, so, thank you.
councillor Coburn.
Yes, I just want to say that I think this will be an improvement, and I think most of us on the site visit thought that, you know, the garages themselves are not unattractive, obviously built with a great deal of thought, but they are largely go back a long way, and I think, you know, can well accommodate two homes, and I think it will tidy up that little cluster of buildings and actually be quite an asset on the site, so I think most of us there were quite impressed when we saw it in the flesh, as it were.
Further, I think the fact that we had the site visit, we saw the separation distance between the cottages and the garage, whereas on the photographs, the two-dimensional bit didn't quite do it for me anyway, but the site visit certainly did, and I have nothing further to say to that, and I don't think anyone else has, so can we move to the recommendation? Recommendation is that subject conditions one to eight and informators wanted to have set out on pages fifty-two to fifty-four of the report, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much, permission granted. Moving on then to item B2, WA twenty sixteen, two, two, four, two, change of use and alteration to an outbuilding and garage to form a single dwelling and garage with associated parking and garden at land at the former Christmas Tree Nursery, Woodside Road, Chittingfold. And Ryan again, all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. So as the location plan shows, the application site forms the access track, a workshop store, and a garage, and the area of land on the former Christmas Tree Nursery site located to the north of Woodside Road. As the aerial photograph here shows, there are numerous buildings and storage parking areas surrounding the application site. The land adjacent to the workshop store slopes steeply down to the west, the surrounding land to the south and west is well-treed, giving the site a semi-rural character. There are some site photographs, the top-left photograph shows the garage and workshop subject of this application to the centre of the image there, so that's the workshop and then the garage. The top-right photograph demonstrates the front east-facing elevation of the workshop and garage, with a proposed parking area to the front. The bottom-left photograph is of the east-facing elevation of the garage, taken from the north of the application site. And the bottom-right photograph shows the rear-facing elevation of the workshop and its proximity to the western boundary of the application site. Some more site photographs here, the one on the left, taken from the south of the workshop building, and again, this shows the proximity of the workshop to the western boundary of the application site, and the photograph on the right demonstrates the access track and part of the proposed amenity area there, to the right of the photograph. Here we have the existing block plan, which demonstrates the location of the existing workshop and the garage building there, and the surrounding buildings to the north-east. Here's the proposed block plan, which demonstrates the location of the proposed dwelling and garage, which would largely remain unchanged from the existing. The parking provision of two further spaces would be provided to the immediate east of the buildings, as you can see there, centre of the image, with the amenity space being located the immediate south. located the immediate south of the buildings. Here we have the existing and proposed garage floor plans and elevation plans. As you can see, there's no changes proposed to that. Here we have the existing elevation and floor plans of the workshop building. The existing dimensions are ten metres by nineteen metres with a total height of four metres. Here we have the proposed elevations. So there'd be no change to the footprint of the building. Some of the existing openings will be utilised for fenestration and additional openings are also proposed to allow more light into the new dwelling. These are predominantly on the west elevation. The other areas to the front and side elevations will be rendered. And here you can see the proposed floor plans, which demonstrate the layout of the dwelling. So conversion of the building into a residential property and associated garage are considered to be an acceptable reuse of the existing building as defined in paragraph ninety of the MPPF and would comply with policy RD seven, the Waverley Local Plan two thousand and two. As a result of its acceptable scale, form and design within the context of the site, it is considered that the proposal would have an acceptable appearance and would not result in material harm to the landscape character and natural beauty of the AOMB and AGLV. The proposal would not harm the visual and residential amenities of the area. Matters or principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the lawful use of the site, the loss of agricultural buildings, housing land supply, Green Belt considerations, impact on trees, highways and parking, effects on SBA's, financial considerations and biodiversity. Matters of judgment are the impact on the landscape character and designated AOMB and AGLV, location of development, design and impact on visual amenity, standard of accommodation and the provision of amenity space and impact on residential amenity. Thank you, Chairman.
Ryan, thank you very much. Members? Councilor Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, there's not much architectural merit here, even in the existing or the proposed. So my only comment is, this is an opportunity to improve this building and the garage is a, you know, a mess. And I would have liked to have seen a bit more quality here in the upgrade and the, I've got no objection to the application per se, but, I mean, it's just pretty awful really. Thanks.
Councilor Adams?
I have some sympathy with Mr. Edwards. Councilor Edwards, stop it. I'm not quite sure, is this a rebuild or is it just, is it just an adjustment to an existing? And is the existing building all cavity wall?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Adams. Yeah, it is a conversion of a building that's existing. As part of the application, they provided an engineer's structural survey and it's capable of reuse without substantial reconstruction. Yeah, I hope that, and in terms of cavity wall, it is, you know, the structural survey demonstrates that it's capable of conversion, as I said, without any reconstruction. So I hope that addresses your concerns.
Was that survey done by our building control or was it done by somebody completely outside our control?
Peter?
Just while Ryan's picking that out, it was done by the applicants, not by our building control surveyors, but, I mean, we wouldn't appoint our surveyors to do that assessment. The applicants are entitled to get their own independent structural survey. The point on the cavity wall is, I've been inside the building, but it's very unlikely that it has got a cavity wall. But when you're converting a building within the countryside, that's common practice to provide that to make it habitable. But by doing that, it doesn't fail the test in terms of where it's structurally sound to be converted, to turn it into habitable accommodation. You probably replace the floor and things like that to make it suitable for habitable accommodation. But that is the usual process that you have when you convert a barn or anything like that, that, you know, there's many that have gone through the committee on that basis and it's just an internal arrangement rather than outside. Sorry, thank you, Councilor Adams.
I mean, we have another one of these, which is, was held together by iron bars up in the Reed's Road in Tilford. And I'm very concerned that it's actually going to fall down. Is there any liability on us if we approve this building and then we find it's got major damp problems or it leaks or it becomes uninhabitable after a short period of time?
Peter?
I might let Joe pick up on the liability, but just on the actual construction of it, it will still need to go through building control and be assessed and confirm that it's suitable for habitable accommodation. So hopefully that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, there's no liability on us, it is a conversion of a building in the countryside, the same as Peter has already said. If you would have a barn, you would have exactly the same process, provided it's structurally capable of conversion, which the structural report says it is, we determine on that basis. And it's then for the developer to ensure that it is obviously constructed or converted in accordance with building regs and all of those installations and things like that are carried out in accordance to make it habitable. It's not, it's not in our remit or in our liability as local planning authority.
Thank you very much, Joe. Councilor Round?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got two points or questions. One, continuing this theme on the quality of the building, whether it'll stay up. Ryan showed us some photographs and I remember, I'm quite surprised it's an existing shell to be retained because that wall back at that one bottom right, it's going to fall over. That obviously nine inch solid wall, no cavity, built into the workshop, is leaning, is standing on an embankment. It is not far enough away from the fall to be judged sound by the building control guys, I guess. So I'm surprised. And secondly, the relevant planning history, is this the same site where we consistently refuse thirty years ago, the erection of a four-bedroom farmhouse etcetera? Because it seems to me, echoing Councilor Edwards' view, that that would be a much more pleasant and acceptable use of the site than converting this miserable falling down shack.
Sorry, Peter?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, I can come back on that point. I mean, in terms of those applications, yes, it relates to that same site. We've got this application before us that looks to come in with a scheme that's policy compliant in the Green Belt. I can't comment on what the considerations were of that application, I haven't got those in front of me, but we're looking now against what policy is relevant in the Green Belt and paragraph ninety accepts conversion of an existing building to be acceptable. If its replacement is a whole different assessment, but we've got to assess the application before us. So it may be preferable for redevelopment of the site, but that's not what we're considering today.
Swiftly correct my maths, it's forty years ago, not thirty.
Any other members wish to come in? In which case, no further comments. Remove to the recommendation, permission be granted, subject conditions one to seven, informants one to four on pages eighty to eighty-three of the agenda report. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Those against? Abstentions?
Abstentions, come on.
Thank you very much, permission granted. Moving in on then to item B three, WA twenty sixteen, one-five-two-five. Erection of nine dwellings and extension to the shop following relevant demolition of unlisted buildings in the conservation area. Brackets, two dwellings, garage and associated buildings, brackets, at Tilford Garage and Appleton's, Tilford Street, Tilford. Rachel?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. This is a site that's been to committee before and I'll go on to explain it is a variation of a scheme that's been previously approved, albeit a fresh application in this instance. I'll start by taking you through the location plan. You'll see it outlined for you in red on the screen here, on the north-west side of Tilford Street. Turning to the aerial photo, just take you through a few of the key existing buildings on site. You see the existing village shop, which is just here. Existing residential development sitting along the western side of the site. And probably the largest structure, you'll see the garage itself in the centre. Turning to the back of the site, you'll see an existing residential property here. And obviously a key part of the site you'll see made up by hard standing, which provides le car parking. Take you through a few site photographs before I go into the proposal in depth. I've just provided this plan here to show you the views that they're taken from, but I will talk through those. Starting on the bottom of the screen, you'll see just here the village shop and you'll see behind the garage. And that's the view taken from the front of the site. This is taken from the sort of field to the west, looking towards the side of the site and you'll see that existing residential development just there and then the garage buildings. Again, just a couple more photographs. On the top left, you'll see you're facing towards the side elevation of le shop and you've got the garage just here. And picture number two, just here, that's taken on the eastern side of the site. And that forms, just in the distance, you can see this access point and that leads up to the residential dwelling to the rear and also that area of hard standing to the rear of the garage. Here you'll see that area of hard standing and the parking. You'll see, get some idea from this image that the site levels do rise towards the rear of the site. And you'll also see on the right-hand side, this is photographed in the residential dwelling at the rear of the site. This on the bottom is le driveway and garden area which serves that dwelling. That's here on your, on the plan. Turning now to the proposed site plan, there's a total of nine dwellings proposed on this site. To the front of the site, you'll see a row of five. This is the existing village shop, which is to be extended. Those, these elements of the scheme and also the nineteen car parking spaces to the rear are all elements that are the same as that previously approved. Le car parking to the rear would serve both the proposed five dwellings here and the remaining space would also be used by both le flats, which currently have no car parking, and also visitors to the shop. The change in the previous application is towards the rear of the site and you'll see here four dwellings proposed. Previously, there were three dwellings proposed in this location. You've got slightly smaller dwellings, but an increase in number by one. This shows you a bit better, I've just pulled up two extracts of the previous proposal and the current proposal, so you can see that change at the rear of the site which I've just mentioned. On the left-hand side, this is the four dwellings currently proposed and you'll see that that is instead of the three dwellings here, you'll see a quite large dwellings in these cases, one smaller dwelling, but sitting in roughly the same area and the same general layout as you've seen previously. This is the proposed street scene. Again, this view in particular is the same as that previously approved. These are the five dwellings to the front of the site you'll see here. The village shop and the extension and existing flats just here. This is the proposed site section running from front on the left, just here, to the rear on the right-hand side. And that's looking from the internal access road. So you'll see here, these are the one, two, three and four dwellings that are the key change on this application. Here you've got some CGI images which give you a comparison with the previously approved scheme. This here, you'll see the three dwellings circled at the back, this is the previously approved scheme. And on the bottom, you'll see here the four dwellings proposed in place. These images show you on the left-hand side, this will be the view from the western boundary. The buildings that you can actually see there are the existing flats on site, so you'll see the existing screening which would sit between the proposed dwellings and actually this view just here. On the right-hand side, you'll see, this will be the view from the main road and the five dwellings to the front of the site. Turning now to the determining issues for the application. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the housing land supply, housing mix and density and highway safety, including the impact on traffic and parking. I'll just make a few comments on those. Clearly, the principle of development, including the redevelopment of the site, is something that's been established by that previous permission. Benefit of this application, there will be one additional dwelling provided on the site and it does also provide an improved housing mix in that in place of those three larger dwellings, there are two smaller dwellings being provided. In terms of highway safety, traffic and parking, the only real change is obviously to those dwellings at the rear, which will have parking, adequate parking within their driveway area to the front of the, front of the buildings. Turning to the matters of judgment, they are the impact on the Green Belt, the impact on the AOMB, AGLV, landscape and trees, the impact on visual amenity in the Tilford Conservation Area, the impact on residential amenity, standard of accommodation and provision of amenity in place space and infrastructure, and that's towards local environmental improvements in that respect. Just a few comments on those, it would involve redevelopment of a previously developed site within the Green Belt. It is considered, as you'll see from the officer's report, to be acceptable in visual terms and similarly, it's a proposal, no objections from the council's tree officer in that respect. In terms of standard of accommodation and provision of amenity in place space, those four houses to the rear, the key changes in the scheme, satisfy that they would have sufficient amenity space and be of a sufficient size and good standard of accommodation. If I could now turn members' attention to the update sheet for this application. Just a few, a few points to note really. A construction transport management plan has been submitted and that's to seek to address the requirements of condition ten on the agenda report. There's an additional application history, that's WA twenty sixteen, one-nine-zero-three. That was varying some of the details of that original consent, so the details of that are there for you on the update sheet. There are a couple of changes to conditions and these reflect, reflects additional information that the applicant submitted since the agenda report, just to try and reduce those pre- commencement conditions should the application get granted. Revised recommendation A is set out for you and that is that permission be granted subject to le completion of an appropriate legal agreement in respect of environmental contributions by le first of the fifth, twenty seventeen, and conditions one to seven, nine, eleven to twenty and twenty-two to twenty-four on the agenda report. And amended conditions eight, ten and twenty-one are set out on the update sheet. There is a recommendation B as well, that remains a set out on page one hundred and thirty-two of the agenda report. Thank you, Chairman.
Rachel, thank you very much indeed. Councilor King?
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. It's not very often that I get more excited about a developer putting in a variation to a site, but this time I am. I actually think that the improved, actually, that's a perfect picture, thank you, the proposed four houses, I believe, are far more in keeping with the local area and give a much better mix of accommodation round there where the need is, where there is that need. I'm happy to say I will be supporting this.
Thank you very much indeed. Very interesting, Councilor Coburn said exactly the same thing on that, when that photograph flashed up. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is a very good development. It's a great improvement. The pictures you showed us of the original site has changed dramatically since those pictures were taken in that I think the previous permission has started to be executed with the demolition of all that garage space, all those garages and things. Yes, I'm, I think the four- Yes, I'm, I think the four houses at the back are much better mixed than the previous proposal. The one point I did make before was that I was disappointed that some of the spaces and some of the houses were a bit tight and I noticed that on page one hundred and ten, many of them are still a bit light on the recommended size for building. I hope that this developer doesn't get a reputation for sardine-like accommodations, but particularly number five, which is nominated as a three bedroom house but is some twenty metres or some, sorry, square metres, but some quite as considerable as the centage smaller than the recommended size. So apart from those, oh and the fact that we missed out on having a parish meeting over the shop, which Frenchman's done very successfully, I'm very much in favour of this development and I'll be voting for it.
Thank you very much councillor. Members, I think we move straight on then to the recommendation on the revised. Recommendation is that permission be granted subject completion of an appropriate legal agreement in respect of environmental contributions by the first of May twenty seventeen and conditions one, seven, nine, eleven to twenty, twenty-two to twenty-four on the agenda report and amended conditions eight, ten and twenty-one as set out above on the amendment sheet. Those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Good job we hadn't called for a site visit on this one in view of the state of the bridge. However, moving on to recommendation B.
The bridge is open today.
Is it? Oh well, they've recovered the car. Recommendation B, that in the event that the requirements of recommendation A are not met, that permission B refused for the following reason, applicant has failed to enter into an appropriate legal agreement, secure contributions towards environmental enhancements to mitigate the impacts of the development and therefore the proposed conflicts with policy D thirteen and fourteen of the Waverley Borough Local Plan two thousand and two and policy ICS one of the pre-submission local plan twenty sixteen. Those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much indeed. I actually understand that legal agreement's very close to completion anyway. Thank you very much indeed members.